Call this Celine City Council order if you please rise and join me to pledge allegiance. The flag is to my left. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag, to the United States of America.
To the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening and myself, Mayor Marl, Mayor Pro Tem Gearball, and councilmembers CO Mitchell, Dylan Del Orco, and Kamara Sulek. Clerk Royal, are you with us?
I am. Brian?
Yep, you there Terry?
Yes.
Very good. Will you please call the rule for staff and other attendees?
All right, I'm also trying to admit people too, so. Intrum City Manager Green.
Here.
Waste Water Treatment Superintendent Gelski.
Here.
City Engineer Fordice.
Here.
Police Chief Hart.
Here.
Parks and Rec Director Scruggs. He's here because I just added her.
Very good. Welcome all those who are participating remotely. We do have a few folks in the audience this evening. For those that are present in council chambers, I would encourage you to sign up in the back to my left and may also retrieve a copy of the agenda on the back table. The chair will actually move to approve the agenda as amended, noting a few changes. The Celine Logic Group will not be presenting this evening. They have been rescheduled to our first meeting in October, which is October the 5th. However, I would like to make a conduct rather, a brief presentation if you'll indulge me. I think, if I'm not mistaken, and the first can correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe there are any other changes or modifications to tonight's agenda. So Mayor Marl will move to approve the agenda as amended. Is there a second? Seconded by CO. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll begin with a very brief presentation. I want to acknowledge before I read the certificates that since the beginning of the COVID-19 outbreak in the late winter, early spring of 2020, there have been a number of individuals and groups within the Celine community who have stepped up to the plate and really made a concerted effort to contribute in tangible ways to the community to promote public safety and public health. And I have a recent conversation or an email exchange rather with Anne Cummings, my friend who's the executive director of the Celine Air and Chamber of Commerce. And it was her recommendation and her staff and volunteers' recommendation that the city recognized three outstanding individuals who have really gone above and beyond during this period. And I hope that two of the three individuals will be present at our next council meeting a week from tonight. But I want to read their certificates of appreciation. And I'll note that these documents are signed by both myself and by our Intrum City Manager, Mike Green. So this will be a certificate of appreciation presented to Kirsten Bach for donating over 1,500 face masks and ear savers. The second certificate of appreciation will be presented to Diane D'Neo for creating masks and donating more than $4,500 to Celine Area Social Service. Really extraordinary. And the last certificate, and I'm pleased that Mr. Davis and his wife are present this evening. This will be a certificate of appreciation presented to M. Adam Davis for donating thousands of handcrafted face shields. Now again, two of the three are not present with us this evening, but Mr. Davis is. And in recognition of his contributions, as well as Diane's and Kirsten, I would hope that you'll join me in giving them a warm round of applause. I have the next person who will give the certificate. Thank you for your contribution, best wishes, great life, thank you. Thank you. Can I get a picture?
Yeah.
You can do that.
Mayor Marl?
Yes ma'am.
We're having a really hard time on Zoom hearing you. It's very choppy.
Is it any better now?
That is better, but it comes and goes, so.
How about now Clerk Royal, any better?
Yes, that's fine, thank you.
Very good, thank you. My apologies. Again, congratulations and thanks to Adam and to our other certificate of appreciation recipients Diane and Kirsten. And like I said, I hope that they'll be able to attend our next meeting a week from tonight so that they can be publicly recognized for their contributions. At this time, we come to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. We'll begin with those present in council chambers this evening. Are there any citizen comments?
Yes, thank you, and I'd like to take my mask off to speak if I may. At the last council meeting, when East Look was talked about, I told about the concerns on Canterbury Park over years. I came across the 1971 article in Celine, the Celine Reporter. And I'd like to read it in part. Mrs. David Hess, at that point I was owned by David, of Canterbury, spoke to council about a pounding, pounding problem in her neighborhood. She said, "We have accumulated water down there, and it's a problem and a hazard." I will go on. Mr. Administrator Mike Straight. "It results from a drain across Willis Road that the county and county installed. They came to a big rock that they couldn't move, so they just lifted the drain over the stone and cut off the runoff from Canterbury by a corresponding amount." Mayor Hubert Beach, this is 1971, said, "Write us a report, Mike, and suggest a solution." Councilman George Anderson, "This is a problem that the city must face up to and solve. This is one of the last remaining major drainage problems in the community. It's a serious hazard. It's a mosquito breeder, and it causes stench in the summer. I think we should look at this in terms of this year's budget. Engineering, it has been before the council for 11 years. Engineering work for the solution to the problem was completed several years ago. Council learned, but the $50,000 price tag attached has deterred action." Well, it has gotten worse and worse over the years. So if you take 1971, that's almost 50 years of coming before council. And if there is a rock, I don't know who's keeping time. If there's a rock under Willis Road, I'm hoping it could be televised because it's not right that it was engineered to go from Canterbury Park to Willis Road to Wilderness Park under Willis Road. And that rock I'm requesting be removed if it's there. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mrs. Hess. And the article that she provided in the Celine Reporter, 1971, copies were distributed to those at the dais this evening and for those that are participating remotely. We will be sure that one is placed in your mailbox. Are there additional citizen comments in chambers this evening? No, then Clerk Royal, do we have comments? I know we received one in advance of tonight's meeting that I copied you in on a response, I copied you in on my response to the couple earlier today. Did you want to begin by reading that? And I would note for the public record that if other individuals have questions, concerns, or comments on agenda items, whether that be an enumerated action item or discussion item, you may type your comments in on the chat icon at the bottom of the screen.
Okay, so we received an email from Mary Klosinski. And her email says, "Dear Mayor Marl and City Council Members, Today we received word that the city of Celine is considering assessing property that will benefit from the proposed new drain next to our house. This drain was Mr. Fordice's solution to our backyard flooding problem caused by several of our neighbors blocking the drainage ditch in the easement behind their houses, which leads to the drain our water should be going down. We have been trying to reason with neighbors for many years and also trying to involve the city in keeping the easement clear so that our yard will stop flooding. Meanwhile, several neighbors continue to pile dirt and even plant trees in the easement. I very much appreciate Mr. Fordice's efforts on our behalf, but I believe he felt the proposed new drain was just easier than trying to enforce the easement. I don't feel we should have to pay for this. As I mentioned in the letter forwarded, our new neighbors had a French drain between our properties. They assured me that this would solve our problem too. They filled in more of the easement and extended their fence to include it. Our yard flooding is worse than ever before. It's a shame our neighbors put in so much work on his own solution to the problem rather than contacting the city, especially since Jim showed him the drain. But I take Section 7.12b to mean that the city is within their rights to clear the easement so that the drain will work as it should. I also found in the Section 8, Appendix Part N, a legal opinion stating that "Any instance where the natural surface flow of water is increased or concentrated in a neighboring property receives more surface water resulting from the change, the increase in flow constitutes a trespass. Since this was included in the city code, I take it to mean that the city supports this view. I understand that in Mommy, Ohio, those encroaching on easements are given notice. If they fail to clear it, the city does so and bills the residents. This is not a new house. My husband has been trying to get the city to act for years, as well as trying to get the neighbors to listen. We have the lowest yard, and people seem to feel that it doesn't affect them. It's not their problem." And she says, "Below are some of our email exchanges. Sincerely and still hope you help," Margaret Klosinski.
Very good. Thank you Clerk Royal and thank you Margaret for submitting your comments this evening. And again, those will be addressed when we get to Agenda Item 20-144. Clerk Royal, were there additional comments, questions, or concerns submitted this evening that ought to be read during this first public comment period?
No, I did not receive any other comments.
Very good, then we will transition to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. I'll move that the consent agenda be approved. But I do want to make note of one thing, and I discussed this in advance of tonight's meeting with Councilwoman Dylan, which, and this relates to consent, Consent Item C-20-141, which is the MML Annual Meeting. And unless there's objections, we would designate Councilwoman Dylan to be the city's official representative at the MML Annual Meeting. So with that, I would move to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Is there a second? Seconded by CO. Moved by Marl, seconded by CO to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We proceed to New Business Item -20105, Extension of Appointment, Mike Green as Intrum City Manager. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve extending the Intrum City Manager position to Mike Green until a new city manager has been appointed or December 31st, 2020, whichever date comes first.
Move to approve.
Moved by Gearball to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dylan. Before we open it up for comments, Mr. Green, would you care to add anything at this time?
No, sir.
Okay. This was discussed in our most recent transition team meeting, so I would defer to Mayor Pro Tem Gearball or Councilwoman Dylan. Let me begin with Mr. Gearball. Anything you would like to add?
No, I just appreciate the work Mr. Green has been doing. He's helped immensely in some of the projects and things, moving them forward and addressing citizens' concerns. I believe we should continue with him in this manner and continue to support his approach.
Very good, thank you Mayor Pro Tem Gearball. Councilman Dylan, anything you'd like to add?
Thank you. I do want to concur with what Mr. Gearball just said and then also add that the Hiring Committee for the City Manager Position is still following its initial timetable, so that that process is moving forward.
Very good. Questions or comments from the dais? Any discussion? Then we have a motion on the floor moved by Gearball, seconded by Dylan, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to New Business Item 20-142. This is Layer Farms PUD Final Site Plan Extension. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 8th, 2020 memo from Intrum City Manager Green and to approve or not to approve the PUD extension request for Layer Farms to December 2nd, 2021. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Mr. Gearball, will you acknowledge first?
Yes.
Acknowledge and approve, okay. It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Gearball to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second? Seconded by CO. Mr. Green, the floor is yours. And then I don't know if we have anyone from Grand Sacra or any associates of that firm present, but at the conclusion of your remarks, I'd be happy to yield the floor to them.
Yes, sir, thank you. So this is similar to the other extensions we've done over the past few months. Due to COVID, the real estate market was real uncertain for a lot of these developers. So they are using their right to request an extension from City Council for these PUDs. So as noted in the memo to you guys, it's not like they haven't done anything over the past couple of years. They have been working on getting their permits from Eagle and getting everything set up before we actually start moving dirt and getting the project rolling. So it is my recommendation that the extension be approved.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Green. Do we know if anyone from Grand Sacra or a firm representing Grand Sacra is on the call this evening?
I believe I see Tom Covert from Midwestern Consulting.
Yes, perhaps he could be unmuted. Clerk Royal, Tom, are you with us?
Yep, good evening, council. I'm here, Nick Donofrio's here, and Scott Manziel's here as well. Mr. Green put together a great summary memo of what's happened with the project and why we're looking to extend the approvals that are in place, as noted.
Very good, thanks for your time this evening, Tom. Why don't you hang tight in the event that there are questions for you or your associates? Other questions for the Intrum City Manager or for our guests this evening? Councilwoman Mitchell and then Mr. Kamara Sulek.
Thank you, Mr. Covert. Thank you for being here tonight. Can you talk a little bit about the timeframe that you're working on now if we were to grant this extension, please?
I apologize, I could not hear her.
How about, I haven't tested my mic. Chris, can you hear me okay?
I'm guessing you can't try and remove your mask for the time being.
I don't, I don't remove my mask, so I will talk louder. How's that?
I got you.
Yep, okay. Can you talk a little bit about the timeline that we are to expect if we should grant this extension?
So I think you were asking about the timeline, if you expect to or anticipate an approval of the extension. Currently, what we're looking at is getting things in order to start construction early 2021.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yep.
Mr. Kamara Sulek?
That pretty much summed up my question.
Okay?
Thank you.
Additional questions from the dais? Mr. Gearball or Councilwoman Dylan, any questions or comments?
None at this time.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor, I do have one question. Will this delay, I know that it's mentioned the Maplewood Pump Station. Will there be any issue with delaying that? It says improvements. So I just want to make sure if there's improvements that we have. We had talked about infrastructure changes on Maple Road for the East Belt and such. So are we postponing those actions at this point?
Mr. Green?
Or are those still moving forward?
Mr. Green, did you want to address, did you hear Councilwoman Dylan's question?
Yeah, Jeff, I might have to defer to Jeff, Mr. Fordice, to see if he has more clarity on this than I do.
Actually, I'm really glad that topic came up. Currently, still moving forward with those plans, but I think it would be very wise, now that this extension has been applied forward, to sit down and get some additional clarity on the Layer Farms schedule. And if we can push off the East Belt another year, I think that would be a fiscally wise move.
Anything else, Councilwoman Dylan?
I, just as a follow-up to Mr. Fordice, is there any concern in prolonging that process? I know, you know, the dollars are an issue, but as far as the infrastructure?
What, I mean, what we have in place right now, particularly at the Maplewood Pump Station, is 100% adequate for what that pump station needs to do right now. The improvements to it are really just for reliability purposes when Layer Farms is discharging into that. So there's not anything significant, no significant concerns in terms of delaying that one. The East Belt itself is currently surcharging under certain storm conditions, but it's minimal, it's not causing any problems, and we don't have any other flows getting ready to go into that line. So we can, we can maintain the status quo. We will have to coordinate with Eagle if we are going to look at postponing it.
Okay, and if there were to be any enhancements in the industrial park, would that affect that East Belt?
That could be a concern, yeah. It depends on exactly where those would be, because not the entire, most of the industrial park does flow through there, but not all of it.
Okay, because that does cause a bit of concern for me to provide this blanket. I, I don't know how to separate out the two issues. I guess I'm not really sure, does, is this going to cause issues for the city on the back end with delays? Or possible delays in future development? Or expansions or such?
I don't think Layer Farms postponing a year would have any of those impacts. So I mean, that's something to very carefully look at when we, if we consider postponing the East Belt project to match Layer Farms' schedule. So that, yeah, that's something we need to look at for that. But at the moment, we don't have any, any of those issues coming up.
So, Mr. Fordice, just to clarify, just very quickly. So then, would we not do the East Belt until Layer Farms is developed?
I think it's worth talking about, because that, you know, that saves us a year of bond interest and, and the, you know, the issues associated with financing that, that East Belt project. So if we can, I think it might make sense, but it definitely needs more thought.
Okay.
And more clarity on the Layer Farms' schedule.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dylan. Any, Mr. Kamara Sulek, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
No.
Can you hear me all right?
No.
Do we need to take a quick tech break?
I don't think there's any, there's a tech solution to this. I don't find that problematic if you wanted to remove your master agency.
Can you hear me now?
No, it's getting worse. We're, it's just dropping in and out, we can't hear it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear the mayor somewhat, but it's the same problem.
Can you hear me now? Now? Hello?
It's really faint.
May I ask my question, or should we just wait?
I'd like to.
Sure.
Testing, testing.
It's better.
Can you hear me clearly enough?
Yes, people are loud.
Okay. Follow-up question for Mr. Fordice. Do we, do we anticipate with what we know now that there would be any development in the industrial park that would contribute to the needs of the East Belt?
I didn't quite catch all that. I think the question was about any known developments coming up in the industrial park. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So we have had some very preliminary discussions with an existing industrial park owner. And they, at the moment, I think are not pursuing their potential increase in flow with any sort of expediency. But that is definitely one of the folks we want to touch base with before we would consider delaying the East Belt.
Great, thank you. And if I could just add to that, Mr. Kamara Sulek, and I believe I'm referring to the same enterprise as Mr. Fordice, the conversations that we had about their long-term growth and expansion, which were, I think, a sort of a five to 10-year plan, were all pre-COVID. So while I believe in the future they will expand and grow in our community, and we would like to incentivize and support that, I don't see that as imminent at this, at this juncture. Additional questions or comments? Councilwoman Mitchell?
No, I just want to test my mic. How's that?
I was unable to hear what the mayor just said. I'm sorry, it's getting worse.
Okay, how about now? Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Kristen.
Okay.
It's like talking in a can. That's what's, and it's kind of fades in and out.
I think it's the Plexiglas barriers. Can I, can everybody hear me okay?
How about now, Mr. Gearball? Is that any better?
Yeah, that was better.
Oh.
Whatever you did to the mayors, Mike, we need the same fix.
Bear with us, folks, we apologize for any inconvenience. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Fordice or our Intrum City Manager Green or our guests regarding this issue? Which is 20-142, Layer Farms Extension. There's no additional questions, any discussion on the motion? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearball, seconded by CO to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously.
I wasn't able to hear a vote from the folks on Zoom.
Janet voted yes, I heard Janet's voice, and I would assume Dean as the mover of the motion to acknowledge and to approve. I would assume that you voted yes as well.
Thank you.
Is that correct?
Yes, I did. Yes.
We move on now to New Business Item 20-143. This is Verizon Wireless First Amendment to the Land Lease Agreement. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 8th, 2020 memo from Intrum City Manager Green and to approve or not to approve the Verizon Land Lease Agreement Amendment.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Been moved by Gearball to acknowledge and to approve. Was that seconded by Kamara Sulek? Yes. Thank you, sir. So we have a motion on the floor to acknowledge and to approve. Intrum City Manager Green, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. Similar to the last one, Verizon and Tower Co. are looking for an extension on the cell tower that is going to go up at the DPW site. So what they're looking for is a six-month extension. Their original contract was going to expire November 1st, 2020. So the new date would be April 1st, 2021. And I do have David Hockey on from Tower Co. if you guys have any questions for him.
Very good, it seems pretty cut and dry. Are there questions or comments for either our guest or Intrum City Manager Green? None from the dais, any from the two that are participating remotely? Mr. Gearball or Mrs. Dylan?
Not at this time.
No?
Yes, I have a quick question, it's from Mr. Green, thank you. Just so I'm clear on the language, so do they have to begin installation of the equipment on or before?
Yes.
So they can, that day, they can put a shovel in the ground and it's okay?
Correct, yep, they need to begin construction.
And do we have a clause in the contract as to the length of time for construction for it to be operational?
I don't believe so, but the biggest thing for us, we start collecting money as soon as they start construction. So if they take two years, to me, it's not that big a deal because we're still collecting rent.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilwoman Dylan. Any additional questions or comments on the motion? No, that's been properly moved by Gearball, or excuse me, yes, properly moved by Gearball, seconded by Kamara Sulek to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay? Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. We move on now to New Business Item 20-144. This is East Look Drainage Special Assessment Resolution. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 8th, 2020 memo from City Attorney Swetts and the September 8th, 2020 memo from Intrum City Manager Green and to approve or not to approve establishing a special assessment district assessing the full cost of assessment over the next five years.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt only.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Mitchell to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. Mr. Green, can I start with you?
Yes, sir, we also do have Mr. Swetts on the call, just in case you guys have questions in a little bit. But yeah, at the last council meeting back in August, you guys wanted us to explore the. to explore the, explore the potential of doing a special assessment district for this situation. So after the council meeting last time, this is what we've come up with. It would be assessing all 10 properties that were previously discussed, and based on the step sheet you guys received last time, if you did decide to go forward with the special assessment, this would be the first step, adopting the resolution, saying we're going to continue to explore, get all the final cost assessments, assign a year for it, and then we would go from there.
Very good. Mr. Swets, do you care to make any additional comments at this time?
The only thing I would add is that if the city would decide to go forward with this, the other decision City Council would need to make in addition to the length of years per payment would be whether or not all of the costs would be assessed or whether there would be an at-large portion that the city would pick up. As Acting City Manager Green noted in his memo, it doesn't appear to be an at-large contribution to the drainage problem here from the city. So his recommendation would be that the whole, the whole amount be assessed.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Swets. For those at the dais, when you're granted the floor, please speak loudly and clearly into the mic and make sure that the green light at the base is illuminated. So we'll begin with questions or comments for the Intrum City Manager and City Attorney. We'll begin with Councilwoman Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. How is this, Roger? Are you able to hear?
Just barely.
Okay, how about now?
That's a little better.
Okay. I am talking quite loudly, like I'm using my outside voice. One of, so I went out to the property today, and I traveled all of the houses that are in the special assisted assessment area, and I did see something that looked like kind of a homemade job and kind of a hand-trenched ditch. And I'd just like to confirm, I guess I also need to ask Mr. Fordice, are you aware of this, this other drain? It's more on the Marle Pool side?
There have certainly been various homeowner efforts to alleviate their own drainage problems in the public comment period. One of those was referenced in Mrs. Klosinski's letter. Yes, there is, there is at least one other one on the Marle Pool side that I believe is a similar kind of configuration where somebody ran a, you know, a little drain tile from the back of the property towards the street.
And is that something that one needs a permit for?
No, not, only if they were connecting it directly to the city storm sewer.
I see.
Now, they are, I mean, they are subject to common law, drainage law. You know, they can't redirect the water towards a neighbor. They can't concentrate it and dump it on somebody else, but those are, those are just kind of common law, civil law issues, and Roger could comment on those more lucidly.
And how do we determine that? So the trench I saw had several kind of raised pieces, and there was a final raised piece on the owner's property right next to the sidewalk.
I could not hear that.
I really, can we just, can we take a minute and fix this?
I don't know that it can be fixed.
I don't know that it can be fixed, Councilwoman Mitchell.
I just don't know how to conduct a meeting.
I don't either, but I'm not, I'm not capable of fixing technology issues.
I could, I could type in, I suppose, type in my question.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, unless you want to take the service to another room, that would break it up. We could do that.
You think it's, I mean, I don't want to, are we all going to leave? I don't want to be the one.
Okay.
To.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me try it now.
Testing. Testing.
You give us a thumbs up, Chris.
Testing.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Mitchell.
Testing, testing. Jeff Fordice, can you hear me?
I heard my name.
So is it just cutting in and out? What, do you want me to type my question into an email or to Zoom? What is?
It's your preference, or I believe our IT director indicated you could go to another room or building in Portland. Is that correct? Yeah.
Okay. It's whatever your preference is.
Uh huh. So I, I was originally there.
Okay.
I moved over here to see if it was better.
Okay.
But I will, I will just go on Zoom.
Okay.
Do you want to go to somebody else who wants?
Yes, I'd be happy to, and I can come back to you. Were there questions from other members at the dais? Mr. Del Orco, questions for either the attorney, engineer, or Intrum City Manager, please? The floor is yours.
I guess I have more comments than questions at this time. This assessment has quickly moved in the direction of placing the onus solely on the property owners, the homeowners. And when this was originally brought to council before us by Mr. Fordice, it was presented as a matter that deserved a public solution. And I'd like to maintain that I still feel pretty strongly about the city of Saline having some contribution to this, so we're not asking the homeowners to bear the brunt of all of it. I recognize that there are circumstances that dictate when that's appropriate, and in my opinion, since this is a situation where the city has not enforced easement encroachments, and there is also situations where one neighbor's solution creates problems for other neighbors, with this amount of money, I think the city can afford to make some contribution to this assessment. That's all I have at this time.
Can I return to you, Councilwoman? Can I return to you, Councilwoman Mitchell?
I can't unmute myself, the host. I need to be made, I need to be made a co-host.
Clerk Royal, can you make Councilwoman Mitchell a co-host, please?
Mayor Morrow, I have a lot of people asking us to halt the meeting or to reschedule it because we can't hear, or they can't hear. I don't know what to tell them. I'm just, I just wanted you to know.
Okay, let me ask this question. Mr. Shaw, would there be any value in recessing for a few moments? Do you think that would potentially improve things?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do this, then. The chair would entertain a motion for a 10-minute recess at 7:38 PM. Actually, the chair will move that we recess for 10 minutes and then reconvene at, let's say, 10 to 8. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Kamara Sulek. All those in favor of a recess for 10 minutes to attempt to resolve the technology issue signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. We're in recess for 10 minutes.